Okay, I'll go ahead and take roll call at 7:22 PM. Hernandez.
Here.
Lindsay Ryan.
Here.
Mendoza.
Here.
Tanya Vudi.
Here.
Hilken. Oh, help, oh, Kim, we'll come back, Kim, sorry.
Here.
Cartha.
Here.
Hilken.
Here.
All right, glad you were able to join us, Joey. Sorry about that. Well, that, you know, that's the, that's Zoom for you and it wouldn't be a good Zoom meeting without some technical difficulties. Thank you all for joining us here this evening for our final board meeting of this school year and what a year it has been. We'll start off with Sergio, I believe you have the approval of the meeting agenda?
I do. I move that the Board of Education approve tonight's meeting agenda as presented.
Second.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Lindsay Ryan.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Tanya Vudi.
Yes.
Hilken.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Cartha. Yes. Um, next on the agenda is some board and then superintendent comments. And I'm going to, I actually have a number of comments that I would like to share this evening. And first of all, I just want to recognize the incredible work this past year of our interim superintendents. It was supposed to be a year preparing for a leadership transition, ended up being so much more unpredictable and involved than any of us had anticipated. And Heidi and Phil, you both embraced this district and community as leaders, not as interim leaders, just as our leaders. And although you had never worked with each other before, your entry into the district as a team was so seamless and you so quickly recognized the talent that we have and embraced the power that you had identified, and you provided us with a brave, professional, and steadfast leadership during a time of such upheaval for our students, our staff, our board. You provided this board with guidance and mentorship through the superintendent search process. And, and that is really just the tip of the iceberg of the enormous work that you have done for this district this year. I know I personally will never be able to express enough how grateful I am to both of you to have been thought partners with you over this last year. You truly were a gift to us, and I know that you will be a gift either individually or hopefully again as a team, because I think you really are a formidable team to any other district that finds themselves in need of interim leadership. So, so from the bottom of my heart, thank you to both of you. And I just want to open it up to my board colleagues if anybody has anything they want to add.
Seth Hill here again. I just wanted to take the time, also I echo all of Suni's praise, you guys have been incredible in helping us transition from one superintendent to another. And again, I appreciate the time that we all spent together talking and helping us strengthen and build our relationships across the district, between cabinet and the board, between the community and the board, hearing our concerns about making sure that we're communicating with all stakeholders and then we get communications in order to be able to communicate effectively with stakeholders across the district. So again, thank you for the incredible work Heidi and Phil that you've done and we're going to miss you for sure. And also looking forward to Devon Horton taking leadership in this district and so excited about his framework that's going to help us move forward. And you've set him up for that, you've set him up for success, you've set us up for success, so thank you. Also want to thank Joaquin Stevenson, who's going to be leaving our district and his leadership around the racial equity work, I wish him luck in his new position. And again, looking forward, again, this work will continue on without him, but he's done some incredible work with the cabinet and again, trying to find ways to engage stakeholders across the district. So those are my comments. I have some other comments, but I'll probably speak, I'll say them later after your comments, Suni.
All right, great, thank you, Sergio. Anybody else?
Yeah, I would just like to, I feel like y'all have thoroughly covered so much, Suni and Sergio, so thank you for queuing that up. Heidi and Phil, it's just been a pleasure to work with you all and I really been impressed with the professionalism, the expertise that you all brought to us, but also the heart that you brought to us. You operated in a manner that you clearly have us in your heart and mind. And we're truly an incredible team, the two of you all together and to the rest of us. Yeah, it's, it's sad to say farewell, but we're also so excited for, for what's next. So thank you all.
Anybody else?
Hi, this is Rebecca. So I wanted to take a moment to just express how fortunate we were to have two individuals that are just, you know, total A-team players. I feel really fortunate to have witnessed two just incredible superintendents bring their best. And I think for, for me, it was just like having, you know, someone like Michael Jordan working for us and to be able to really witness somebody who just gave their, gave their all and just brought an incredible amount of dedication. It wasn't, it wasn't just interim work, it was really joining us in our path and what we're doing at our school district. But I just, I took great joy in watching you, watching you work and learning from you and just thank you. Thank you so much. You're going to be, you're going to be missed.
Yep, for sure. Anybody else want to add anything?
I'll just say, as a newest member of the board, I did not get to work with you quite as long, but even in my brief time with you, I could sense your deep expertise and your passion for this work. And I learned in just the few board meetings that I was part of. So I appreciate what you've done this year and even though I didn't get to work with you, I too will miss you. Thank you.
All right.
I think, this is Joey, and I think that the, looking back, it was really hard for us as a board to know what we needed out of the superintendent role as we began the transition. And Stacy brought stability right away as a bridge to Heidi and Phil. And I don't know how you could read the Evanston 65 community and know what we needed to bring it to, to the office and to the district leadership wise, but you read the community, right? And you took great steps. They weren't all easy steps to take. And we really, I appreciate your leadership, your modeling, and the care that you took of the community as if it was your own. So thank you.
And just to echo, what we needed was unflappable and you all delivered it every single time. When things felt chaotic or totally unprecedented, you all just stayed, like stayed the course and helped us problem solve. And it was incredible as we, you know, tried to go through situations that none of us could have anticipated. Your steady presence, I think, gave all of us the room to breathe and do what we needed to do. And so I'm, you know, starting out on the board, I'm very grateful for, you didn't bring me puppies, Heidi, I asked for puppies, but otherwise grateful for all that you did to steward us through what was a pretty chance this year. So thank you.
Agreed. Agreed. You have, you've only been here for a year, but you have definitely made an impact on this board and on our community. So thank you very much. I just want to, I had some other, some other remarks that I had prepared because we're also going to be doing a, later in the meeting, we will be doing our board reorganization. And so in advance of that, I wanted to share a few, few remarks. At the risk of sounding cliche, the last three years, serving as president of the District 65 Board of Education have been simultaneously the most challenging, sometimes the most frustrating, and without question, the most rewarding experience of my professional life. And I just wanted to take a few moments to celebrate some of what we have accomplished over the last three years. During this time, we took the district's stated commitment to equity to the next level, adopting a comprehensive racial equity policy, making racial equity trainings a mandatory requirement for employment in this district or for serving on this board, and formalizing through policy the use of a racial equity impact assessment tool for all board level decision making. We also encouraged and supported our administrators in making racial equity trainings available to our community partners and parents, which I believe had been instrumental in moving forward some long-needed equity conversations within our district, such as conversations being facilitated by the PTA Equity Project, as well as an increasing support for and reducing opposition to much-needed equity measures in our larger community, such as the city council vote in favor of reparations. We used the findings of a racial equity audit to take action on eliminating tracking in eighth grade algebra and to enhance our capacity to serve Spanish-speaking emergent bilinguals in TWEED classrooms. We expanded our gender policy to be more inclusive of students and staff who identify as non-binary and albeit not without some timing issues, set in motion the creation of student and staff administrative procedures to better support our gender expansive community. We revamped our dress code policy, largely in response to calls from our students highlighting the racial disparities in enforcement. And we rewrote our discipline policy to reflect our commitment to restorative practices and to ending the school-to-prison pipeline. Something that feels particularly, particularly resonant in this moment, we pushed for a rethinking of the SRO relationship with the Evanston Police Department, to limit it to an adult-based relationship focused on true emergency planning, while we urged our administrative team to provide alternative supports for students in crisis, which led to increasing the number of school-based staff trained in de-escalation techniques and the creation of school and district response teams to provide developmentally appropriate supports to students in crisis. Using collaborative interest-based bargaining, we negotiated two long-term contracts with our largest collective bargaining units, educators and parent professionals, that honor the work and expertise that they bring to their jobs every day while staying within the district's reasonable financial projections, or at least they were reasonable before COVID-19 kind of upended everything. And as an extra bonus, I'm told that this was the first time in many, many years that bargaining successfully concluded prior to the end of the school year. We have worked within the finance committee and with the business office to adopt a racial equity lens and budgeting so that we can preserve our referendum dollars and plan for long-term financial stability while maintaining our commitment to enhancing the experience of our Black and Brown students and to reducing the gap in opportunity to achieve. And we oversaw an expansive and inclusive superintendent search process that engaged over 1,000 community and staff members, modeled the use of a racial equity lens, and resulted in our hire of a dynamic, passionate, and bold leader whose values, experience, and vision are exactly what we need to help us reach this board's and our community's goals of creating safe, inclusive, equitable schools that support the learning and growth of our students and eliminate the racial predictability in student outcomes. Oh yeah, and by the way, there was also a pandemic in there that we had to, to plan and adjust for. As important as it is to celebrate our accomplishments, and I know that there are certainly many that I forgot to mention, that this, these remarks would have been way too long if I tried to list everything. It's also important to understand that there is still much work to do. Especially at this moment in time, when many of us are attending rallies and wearing t-shirts or holding signs that emphatically proclaim that Black Lives Matter, we need to reflect on what we are doing to give those words meanings, give those words meaning, so that they are more than just words. Each one of us has a role in dismantling anti-Black institutional racism. And for Black lives to matter in our schools, we must center the needs of Black children and families. To my board colleagues, we must reflect on how we adopt policy, on whose voices we hear, and how we ensure that we are not implementing policy directed at historically marginalized groups, but rather are including those groups in the planning. For our administrators and staff, this means reflecting every day on how our biases inform our practices, continuing to use the racial equity impact assessment tool as a check against those biases, and authentically inviting the expertise of each other as colleagues and collaborators, always keeping the academic and social emotional needs of students, particularly Black students, at the center. For our union leadership teams, this means reflecting on the important historical role that unions have played in bringing about change, but also in hindering it, so that your organizations can lean into the former and honestly scrutinize the latter. And for our parents, this means reflecting on how we advocate for our children and recognizing that being anti-racist means accepting the programs and practices that our data proves to us is harming Black and Brown students must be changed, even if we perceive those programs and practices as benefiting our own children. And I do just want to give a special recognition and thanks to our students, who really do regularly show us how amazing they are. From the concerning foster performance a few months ago to the rallies and discussions that young people are organizing right now, and I mean literally right now, because I think there's a fundraiser that some recent ETHS grads have organized for this evening. But the things that they're doing to support Black lives and advocate for police reform, you know, they are showing up and they are giving me hope and inspiring me to do better every day. I encourage our board and our incoming superintendent to really think intentionally this year of how we can engage these young voices in our anti-racist work. I stepped down tonight as board president feeling grateful to have worked alongside this most amazing group of board colleagues. Working with all of you these last three years has been such an incredible experience and I cannot express how remarkable a group of people you all are and how extraordinary it is to think about all that we have accomplished together. None of this would have been possible without each one of you. I'm so grateful to be able to continue this work with you for at least another year. And I am so grateful and honored to have shared this leadership journey with Anya Tanya Vudi, one of the most intelligent, compassionate, and forceful advocates I have ever worked with. Her support of me, as well as her challenging me when my ideas and assumptions needed to be challenged, made me a better leader. And I can think of no better time than right now, when our community needs strong Black voices to guide our work, to be welcoming one of the best as our new board president. I know our board and district will continue to do great things under her leadership. Thank you. Thank you. Did we have any other board comments? I think Sergio, you said you had.
Yes, I did. I just wanted to say the comments in English and Spanish, so I'll start off with that, with the English. So as you know, you know, we've had these protests, these much-needed protests around the racism in the society. And, but one of the most troubling aspects in the recent protests is the emergence of historical tensions between the Black and Brown community and specifically the violent attacks on Black people by Latinx gangs in Chicago. These tensions between our communities arise from fear and distrust sold by a shared history of colonialism and living in a racist capitalist society that continues to exploit us. Our two communities have been terrorized by local police and federal police in the form of the FBI, CIA, and ICE when we have tried to organize for better social and economic conditions in our communities and in our home countries. For the Latinx community, the CIA has been using our home countries to destabilize our economies, continue the exploitation and extraction of our natural resources, and forced many of us to migrate here in order to face the same exploitation to benefit the society's insatiable consumption habits. In the Black and Latinx communities, the FBI and CIA and local police have and continue to terrorize, destabilize, and demonize grassroots and social movements who have fought for equity, social justice, and human dignity. These struggles have always ended in the death of brilliant Black and Brown leaders like Fred Hampton and Rudy Lozano, or the discrediting and demonization of the brilliance, such as in the cases of Angela Davis and Nolores Huerta. So in the lieu of this history, I'm here to, one, condemn any attacks from my community against any Black person and also publicly commit myself as a Latinx public official to do whatever I can to ensure that Black lives matter. I would like to invite my Latinx colleagues and neighbors to explore our own implicit bias and internalized colonialism that may affect itself in the discrimination against our Black and indigenous Latinx brothers and sisters and our African-American brothers and sisters through our existing district racial equity trainings. I would also like to invite Black colleagues and neighbors to dialogue with Latinx neighbors and colleagues and discuss the history of our unique struggles in order to build our power and find a way for the Latinx community in Evanston and North Shore to support our Black sisters and brothers in the struggle. I also have homework for our fellow community members who are tired of statements and are ready to act now for transformative change. Let's talk to our children about the kind of world they would like to inherit from us and what it would take to create a new system and world. I asked my eldest son, Matias, a rising sophomore at ETS, and he had this to say. Stop consuming things from big industries or corporations. When the, when the consumer stops consuming, the producers will fade. This also includes mainstream media. Stop watching news all the time and get different, news from different sources. Number two, support smaller, local-owned businesses, and specifically businesses run by people of color, like barber shops, street vendors, corner stores, et cetera. Connect and help people out. Be active in your community. Try and start your own business and advocate for good food, medical needs, and education that incorporates more mental health. Or help people that want help, but don't sacrifice yourself too much. Make sure, make sure you are stable and mentally healthy yourself. And then have fun and don't get carried away. And I'm here to demand justice for George, Brianna, and Amara and the countless other folks who have been persecuted and murdered by, 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 by our police. Si se puede. Uno de los aspectos más preocupantes en las recientes protestas es el surgimiento de tensiones históricas entre la comunidad negra y Latina, y específicamente los ataques violentos contra las personas negras por parte de las pandillas Latinx en Chicago. Estas tensiones entre nuestras comunidades surgen del miedo y de la desconfianza sembrada por una historia compartida de colonialismo y de vivir en una sociedad racista y capitalista que continúa explotándonos. Nuestras dos comunidades han sido aterrorizadas por la policía local y policía federal en forma de la FBI, CIA, y ICE cuando tratamos de organizarnos para mejorar las condiciones sociales y económicas en nuestras comunidades y en nuestras comunidades de origen. Para la comunidad inmigrante Latinx, la CIA se ha utilizado en nuestros países de origen para destabilizar nuestras economías, porque la explotación y extracción, extracción de nuestros recursos naturales nos obligó a muchos de nosotros a migrar aquí para enfrentar la misma explotación en beneficio de estas sociedades hábitos de consumo instaciables. En las comunidades negras y latinas, el FBI, la CIA, y la policía local han aterrorizado, continuamente desestabilizando y demonizando a las bases y los movimientos sociales que han luchado por la equidad, la justicia social, y la dignidad humana. Estas luchas siempre terminaron, terminan en la muerte de líderes brillantes afroamericanos y latinos como Fred Hampton y Rudy Lozano, o demonización de sus brillantes como en los casos de Angela Davis y Dolores Huerta. Entonces, por esta historia estoy aquí para comprometerme públicamente como funcionario público de Latinx, para hacer todo lo posible para asegurar que Black, para apoyar a nuestros, nuestros hermanos y hermanas afroamericanas. Me gustaría invitar a mis colegas y vecinos Latinx a explorar nuestro propio racismo y el colonialismo internalizado que se manifiesta en la discriminación contra nuestros hermanos y hermanas latinos negros y indígenas y afroamericanas a través de nuestros entrenamientos de equidad en este distrito escolar. También me gustaría invitar a mis colegas y vecinos afroamericanos a dialogar y discutir la historia de nuestras luchas únicas para construir nuestro poder y encontrar un camino para que la comunidad Latina Evanston y North Shore apoya a nuestros hermanos y hermanas afroamericanas en esta lucha. También tengo una tarea para otros miembros, para nuestros miembros de la comunidad que están cansados de declaraciones y están listos para actuar ahora para un cambio transformador. Hablamos con nuestros hijos sobre el tipo de mundo que les gustaría heredar de nosotros y lo que se necesitaría para crear un nuevo sistema y mundo. Le pregunté a mi hijo mayor, Matías, que es un estudiante de segundo año en la secundaria ETS, y compartió lo siguiente. Déjen de consumir cosas de grandes industrias y corporaciones. Cuando los consumidores dejan de consumir, los productos se desvancen. Esto también incluye a los principales medios de comunicación que dejan de ver noticias todo el tiempo y buscan de varios fuentes de información. Número dos, apoyen a las empresas locales y específicamente a las empresas dirigidas por personas de color. Conéctate y ayuda a las personas, a peluquerías, a vendedores, ambulantes, tiendas de esquina, et cetera. Sea activo en tu comunidad y entente y comienza tu propio negocio. Lucha para mejores alimentos, necesidades médicas, y educación que habla más sobre salud mental. Cuatro, ayuda a las personas que quieren ayuda, pero no te sacrifices por personas que no quieren ayuda y asegúrate que tú estás estable mentalmente. Y diviértete, pero no te dejes de llevar, no te dejes llevar. Queremos justicia para George Boyne, Brianna, George Floyd, Brianna, y Amara. Si se puede.
Thank you, Sergio. Any other board comments?
Yes, I have a comment. So thank you for, for sharing that, Seth Hill. My comment tonight is a comment of appreciation and gratitude for our community. So we have possibly endured as a collective one of the most challenging and unparalleled events of our lives, I think we could all agree. And I have to say that I'm just incredibly proud of this community and how we've come together to support our families, our community members. And I wanted to just take a moment to express my gratitude to the countless organizations in our community that have helped during the pandemic meet the needs of the, of COVID-19. And so that goes to individuals, established organizations, but I think more so to the organizations that came up as a response to all, all of the, the needs that our community had during the last 90 days and then some. So I'm not going to name them all, but I just wanted to thank one community for their patience and for their, their trust in us as a school district to know that we were working around the clock for many hours trying to really meet the demands of online learning and the demands of the pandemic. But also just the countless community members that have stepped up to help with assisting their neighbors for countless needs that have come up in our community. And I just, I'm incredibly proud to be part of this District 65 board, but more so the Evanston Skokie community. So thank you for all of the help that you've, you've extended to our youth and our families, the organizations that have, that have stepped up. And I just implore all of us to, to keep at it because we're gonna, we're, this, this ride's not over. And so with the same spirit of community that we, that I feel right now in this meeting, I just, I hope that what's going to be presented this evening, that, that we continue that collaborative nature and that, I also just wanted to thank you, Suni, for your leadership, for the amount of time. I don't think people understand just how much time it takes to be a school board president. And you just have really amazed me in your, you know, the time that you give and really the dedication and the, the passion that you bring to your, to your position. That's, you know, sort of like a full-time job. So I wanted to say thank you for being a great leader. And again, thank you to, to the community for, for getting us through. And we still have so much more to go. So that's, that's my comment for this evening.
Thank you, Rebecca. Anybody else? And we will move Phil and Heidi. Did you have a superintendent update that you wanted to give us?
Yes, we'd like to do that. Heidi and I would like to spend just a couple brief moments sharing with you our experiences. Over the years, Heidi and I as superintendents have been called a lot of different names, but to be mentioned with Michael Jordan is quite flattering. So thank you. That was outstanding with that as well. As you know, the board gave us two main goals to put in place and one of those was to move the district forward based on the seven priorities. And then secondly, a goal which was extremely important was to develop and implement a plan for a smooth transition for the new superintendent and to make sure that that person would be fully prepared for that. Given the combined 85 years of experience that Heidi and I Given the combined eighty five years of experience that Heidi and I have as educators, this year stands out as being very unique. We, of course, had the pandemic and moved to remote learning. And then most recently, as some of you have mentioned this evening, with the anti racist movement going on in Evanston. State, national, and now it's even gone global is another one, too, that makes it very unique. We'd like to thank the board for their support, the cabinet, the staff, and the community. For making decisions based on one key thing, what is in the best interest of students, and that's the bottom line with that as well. The future, I think, is very bright for District sixty five. Suni, the leadership, the compassion, the grace that you have exhibited as serving as board president is exemplary. Anya, you have big shoes to fill, but we are confident you will be able to do that in a great manner to follow along with that as well. Lastly, with Dr. Horton, he's already made a very significant and positive impact. On not just our school district, but also on our community as well. Heidi and I both share, I think, the purpose of education. And the best way that we could encapsulate that is a quote from Dr. Martin Luther King. The function of education is to teach one to think intensively and to think critically. Intelligence plus character, that's the goal of education. Again, thank you very much. It's been an honor and a privilege for us to serve the students, the staff. And also the board and the families of District sixty five. Heidi, you have a few words that you'd like to say as well.
You know what? Thank you, Phil. We have definitely found it to be an honor and a privilege to serve in the role of interim superintendent. In Evanston Skokie School District sixty five. This has been a year to remember, as the district has faced some unprecedented challenges. I think one of our favorite gifts was being able to witness the joy that students and staff experienced together. As they fully engage in the learning process in our classrooms. And we just can't wait to welcome all of our students and staff back to their second home, their schools. We wish to express such sincere gratitude to this Board of Education. To the amazing administrators and faculty and staff that we've had a chance to work alongside. Our community partners have been amazing. And as Phil has said, our families are truly wonderful. And I feel that everyone has come together this year to provide learning and safety for our students. Students across our globe and in our local community. They count on having effective schools. Paramount to us this year in this role has been our commitment to ensuring student learning and safety. Leading racial and gender equity. Strengthening community partnerships and creating practices for accountability and increased communication. As we look ahead towards the new school year, we have every confidence in Dr. Horton's leadership. I cannot tell you what a pleasure it has been for us to see him. Throughout this transition, be visionary and and completely engaged in the process of ensuring. That we will systematically improve student learning outcomes and experiences in each of our schools. All of you have become our educational family and we wish you well. As you move forward, we know that you will have the courage and the resolve to face the issues of tomorrow. And we will truly miss being a part of this extraordinary school district.
Thank you so much.
For our district updates, we have tonight two. One of those is to give you an update. And Stacy, if you could do that for us to talk about the summer learning experiences that we are providing our students.
Sure. So really, I'm following up. I'm just sharing the summer enrichment information that we have. Everything that I am saying tonight is available on the District sixty five website. And there is a tab on the front page for summer enrichment. As far as summer enrichment this summer, it was important for us to provide a number of different things. One, we are continuing to run our targeted programs for students that are not yet at grade level with a primary focus. And on our youngest learners, our students rising to K one and two. All of our district run academic programs are remote this year and were just launched today. There is intention to keep it close to the end of the school year to help families maintain routine. And those programs are focused on students with I E Ps, second language learners. And then students, as I said, in our primary grades that are not yet at grade level. And we're interested in accelerating those learning opportunities in order to have students be in the best possible position for their return to school. Additionally, we work to provide opportunities that families could access on an ongoing basis throughout the summer. Because we know clearly they moved to remote learning in the spring has left families seeking ongoing learning opportunities. We are our web based learning tools, including S T Math, Lexia, Newzella, I X L. All of them are remaining open to families through August seventh. And so students can continue to move forward, progressing in the customized learning, both iStation, Newzella, I X L. All adapt using diagnostics, so they adjust to meet the needs of students exactly where they are. So we do encourage families to continue using those tools. Additionally, we have a partnership with the Evanston Public Library. They, of course, are running their summer reading program, Dig Deeper. We're encouraging people to go and sign up. And everything is available remotely and online this year. They have a learning platform where students can be tracking their learning. And we will continue to celebrate learning with Evanston Public Library. Our librarians also issued their bingo boards and will be doing read alouds throughout the summer. Encouraging summer reading in partnership with Evanston Public Library. We really are trying to consolidate our efforts there and get kids reading as much as possible. We know, you know, there are a couple really pieces, important pieces of information. The amount of time students spend in independent reading outside of school was the best predictor of reading achievement period in a nineteen eighty eight study. And there's a load of other information out there. So at a minimum, taking advantage of the virtual resources, both through District sixty five and Evanston Public Library to keep us in books. Learning about the world is an incredible way to go. I mean, you'll find those resources again on the District sixty five website. Additionally, we did put out a June enrichment board, and you'll see the enrichment board is focused on pre K to two, three to five, and middle school. And reaches into the arts and enrichment opportunities as well as STEM and literacy. The board does indicate whether an adult is potentially needed to support accessing that learning or whether students can engage in it independently. And there's some incredible resources out of that on there, including some of Joe Bowler's U cubed resources, Smithsonian resources, virtual field trips. So again, we encourage people, those are there, we're curating them, we'll publish another board beginning of July and another one in August. In order to keep kind of curating and putting out opportunities that I think families and students will find engaging and fun. And really connected across disciplines for students. And then the last thing, learning related, is to continue to watch the E L three parent portal as well as student portal. Because our partners are putting up summer programming there. And that is where we will see some of the virtual opportunities from the Y, Y O U, others going up within the community. That students have the opportunity to access as well. Connected to that, we did make the decision to leave all of the technology that we have distributed since March thirteenth. Within the community so that students could continue to access remote summer learning as well as all of our partners' activities throughout the summer. And so that for us is twelve hundred devices in addition to the sixth and seventh grade iPads. So really well over twenty five hundred devices and four hundred hotspots in the community to allow families to stay connected. Continue to do the learning through learning systems, access Evanston Public Library resources as well as our summer programming. We did extend finally our technology service hours as well. And so families will continue to have tech support in English and Spanish throughout the summer. And the hours and access for that is available again on the website. And the last thing that we did make available on the website was access to mindfulness and social emotional learning opportunities. Because we, you know, the ability to be able to connect, help kids and adults make sense of the experiences that we're in and keep working on. Self regulation and navigation in these difficult times is really, really important. And so we really encourage families wherever possible to access these opportunities. And if there's feedback or additional things we can do to be supportive, to please reach out. So thank you.
Stacy, thank you very much for providing all those resources with you and your staff to give students continued learning during the summertime, which is even more important this summer with the learning dip. That is occurring with that, too, so thank you. What we want to do.
Equally, Phil, we really appreciate families for everything they're doing right now to keep kids connected and everything they have done to get us to this point. And so thank you to the families for all the work they've done.
Great point. The second item we want to talk about tonight, board, is give you an update on what we're planning for the return to school. We started this process about six weeks ago. And then as Dr. Horton has been transitioning in, he has taken the baton and sprinted forward with it, which has been great. So he'd like to give you just a brief overview of what the process is going to look like. And I believe the first meeting is tomorrow for the kickoff, right, Dr. Horton?
Yes, thanks, thanks, Phil, absolutely. I think more than anything, what's really important and what's exciting about the city of Evanston and Skokie. Is that you guys are in front of this statement and you're ready to say, I really believe, and this is showing more like, and it's better than any other time. That students do not fail. It's the social structures that we as adults create that fail our students, and that's what's happening right now. And we want to be sure as we embark on a return to school plan, we include and involve key stakeholders across, not just the district. But the city of Evanston. So with our team, led by all of us, are really chipping in heavy. We have reached out to roughly over sixty community members, parents, all union representation, some clergy, in addition to. Special education support, any organization that's in our community, our parents. We have invited constituents to be a part of this this large return to school task force. This task force will convene for the first time tomorrow. And we are, I just want to say thank you to everyone who has committed their time. We're asking for quite a bit of your time over the next five to six weeks, where we will plan. And we will actually address building out four different options. We are currently in a state of where we don't know what it's going to look like when we return to school. We don't know if we're going to return earlier on the time that we have scheduled or even later. But this task force will play a major role in bringing recommendations toward to the board so that we can decide. Whatever choice we make, that we have a viable plan that has one hundred percent the community voice involved in it. So Adila, can you, can you pull that up? The different options, and I'll just talk through really quickly. All right, as you can see here, and you'll learn more about this. This is, we're starting with the different options and then the potential calendar implementation. So option A, to open schools with no contact limiting. We understand that this option is probably not going to happen in the fall. But when it happens, we want to be fully prepared for that. Option B, schools open with significant safety, hygiene, and social distancing. The school day will look very different in order to adhere to establish safety guidelines. New procedures may include a staggered schedule, hybrid of in person and remote instruction, social distancing in classrooms, no large gatherings, arrival dismissal schedule. And thorough hygiene measures. Option C, school opens for some students and staff with significant safety, hygiene, and social distancing. I just want to say thank you to everyone who's completed our survey so far. We've had great responses, and this option was really generated from the responses from our survey. Concerned about our marginalized students who may not be benefiting from the current remote structure. And we want to be sure that we have options in the fall that are viable and that are effective. This option is a hybrid of remote and in person instruction that may prioritize the return of students based on age. Academic standing, access to resources, and care at home and other unique needs. Not other unique needs really falls into the category of S C L, food support, mental health, all of those other areas that are so important. Option D, schools remain closed and remote learning continues. With feedback from educators, students, and families, we continue to refine and strengthen our current approach to provide equitable and sustained learning experiences for all. You've heard me mention the fact that we must look in the mirror. District sixty five, this team and our staff, we've looked in the mirror and we know there's a lot of hard work that has been put in. But we also are expecting to to do this better. The country was hit with the pandemic out of nowhere, and so we had to create something that was viable and that made sense. And now we know that there's time for us to put all of the structures in place for this to be effective. And of course, E is a new calendar if it's implemented. And then any out of any one of these options, a new attendance calendar could be adopted by the district. And just with a new timeline, this will require stakeholder collaboration, which we are engaging in now. So Adila. Here's where we are, as we talk about convening return to the task, to school task force comprised of educators, staff, administrators, parents, and community partners. Representation from all bargaining units, we are fully vested in hearing the voices of all as we plan for something that we have, no one has the answer to. And we are going to be fully open to what those decisions will look like. Again, our goal is to not allow our students to fail and definitely not creating structures that we create socially that allow them to do that. So thank you.
Thank you so much, both to Stacy and Dr. Horton for those updates. You know, and for just the incredible amount of work. I mean, I'm especially so excited to hear about what's being offered over the summer. It's that's a really an incredible amount of resources that the district is making available. And so I really encourage parents to take advantage of it with their students over the summer. And again, Dr. Horton, thank you for all of your work. I know that there's, we've been receiving some emails, and I know people are anxious to know what the fall is going to look like. I think we are all anxious to know what the fall is going to look like. But we also know that these are things that are going to require a great deal of thought. And, you know, varying perspectives. So I appreciate the thoughtfulness with which you are approaching this. I know that we will be keeping, you know, state mandates and public health guidance certainly at the forefront. And making sure that everything complorts with those. And, you know, just the needs of students, so thank you. Next on our agenda, I believe, is public comments. And I know we have a few. So members of the public wishing to provide a comment to be read at tonight's board meeting were asked to email the board secretary by four P M. this afternoon. Due to the governor's order, the District sixty five Board of Education will be conducting virtual board meetings and adjusting the method of public comments as allowed by the public access counselor during the current state of emergency. So Adila, if you can unmute yourself and read the first of the several statements that we have.
The first statement we have is from John Fry and Emily Lieber. They say, Dear District sixty five School Board members, as parents of a District sixty five student and regular voters in local elections for the past ten years. We strongly urge the school board to resume normal operations for elementary and middle schools in the fall of twenty twenty according to the normal schedule. With increased emphasis on hand washing and sanitizing playground equipment and other high touch areas. COVID nineteen does not target young children. In fact, ninety three percent of those who have died from it were age fifty five or older. And recently improved mortality rate estimates are estimates are closer to twenty five percent or zero point twenty five percent, which is not much different than the common flu. We absolutely should be taking measures to protect and isolate the elderly and other more vulnerable members of our community. However, continuing the recent elementary school closures would unfairly deprive our children of precious educational and social skills. Social skills development time in the most formative period of their lives. This impact is even worse for members of our local minority community and others who are disadvantaged in their access to computers and high speed internet. Furthermore, recent school closures have inflicted undue stress upon working families across this area. Whose ability to work and put food on the table depends. whose ability to work and put food on the table depends on our schools being open. We fully support the eight principles put forward by President Obama and the My Brothers Keeper Organization intended to stop police brutality. And we feel strongly that this is not the moment to hurt these communities even more by depriving these children of their right to a public education. We love and commend our District sixty-five teachers and administrators for their exceptional efforts to provide online educational tools for our kids during the past two and a half months. However, despite their efforts to adapt to the rules imposed on them, online education is simply not effective for elementary school age children. At this age, kids lose interest in the online format after twenty to thirty minutes. This format simply does not allow our teachers to give kids the attention they need and deserve and excessive screen time and related brain effects was already a problem for for kindergartners and first graders before adding this to their day. We understand why the board decided to close schools based on the uncertain and sometimes misleading information we had available back in March. However, the facts are clear now and fatality rates are much lower than originally thought. People need companionship and face-to-face interactions with other with other people and therefore it is simply not healthy to continue isolating our community's kids any longer. Like we did after nine eleven, twenty, two thousand and one, we must fight to continue our way of life and ensure that our community's children are not left behind. Sincerely, John Frye and Emily Lieber. And we have another comment. The next comment is from Jackie Lo. She writes, thank you to the board and to Romi Di Cristofaro for your in-depth dive into the data that revealed racial inequities in special education at the May eighteenth board meeting. This resonated with me as a white parent and as a parent with a child with disabilities. One would have to be callous not to be deeply saddened by the data presented that showed the significant lack of access to gen ed classrooms and curriculum for black and Latinx children with IEPs compared to white students with IEPs. And the over identification of black children in the special education categories of intellectual disorder and emotional disorder and the over identification of Latinx children in the category of language disorder. I appreciated the context in which the data was presented. Romi explicitly spoke of systemic responsibility for these problems. I have been disturbed by several conversations critical of the discussion at the May eighteen board meeting. I have heard comments critical of the board calling their wording offensive and divisive. This is, that is a misrepresentation of the discussion. I appreciated that the board was in full support of Romi Di Cristofaro's recommendations. I also appreciated that the board asked that there be action taken to address the alarming racial disparities that we saw in the data that was presented. The board refused to ignore those disparities or the children impacted by them. Members of the board use the terms white supremacy and opportunity hoarding. I ask, why are these seen as offensive and divisive terms? I don't know another term besides white supremacy for a system that for its entire existence benefits white children and not black and Latinx children. And if you don't call that white supremacy, please dig deep and ask what you do attribute racial disparities to. If you, if your answer is culture, low income, families or children, there's also a term for that. It's racist beliefs. I reject the idea that this data tells us that white kids with IEPs are more worthy of inclusion and academic rigor than black and Latinx kids. Instead, let's understand that racial disparate disparate data is caused by an inequitable system that serves white kids better than it serves black and Latinx kids. As parents, we need to be aware of the big picture, though I know that's hard, especially for those of us with children with disabilities. And that is why I appreciate Romi's comments that the district will distribute resources equitably and audit the evaluation process for diagnosis of black and Latinx kids students. I want to close by thanking the board and Romi Di Cristofaro again. What I heard on May eighteenth was the District sixty-five admin and board members' support of Romi's proposed changes. I heard them acknowledge their role in racial disparities and diagnosis and lack of inclusiveness for black and Latinx children with disabilities. I heard them discuss solutions to better identify the true needs of students. That is exactly what I would want if my children with true disabilities were not being offered the same level of inclusiveness or if they were being misdiagnosed with disabilities. Because it reflects our community values of equity and justice. Best, Jackie Lo. Our next comment is from Evanston Aide. States, Dear District sixty-five Board and Administration, thank you for the statements that you released to stand in solidarity with Black Lives Matter last week. Your commitments to protect our black and brown children with a deep look to addressing institutional racism rooted in policy at District sixty-five. Thank you for taking the time to provide information regarding how race currently impacts children of color in District sixty-five. It is our understanding that with the current tracking policy in place that one out of a hundred black students make it to accelerated math. Given this information, if this is the impact by race, then why perpetuate a narrative that continues to harm our black and brown children? A narrative that perpetuates the identities of inferiority and superiority that are playing out right now in our nation. We also want to acknowledge and realize that there may be some concern about making a permanent decision to detract math at the last board meeting without the full input of our community. We simply ask, do we have a public comment when dismantling racist practices? Do we have time for years of hard work by educators committed to anti-racism getting drowned and overpowered by white supremacy and opportunity hoarding? If we know that tracking has a racist impact and that our educators are equipped to serve all students in a differentiated model, what stops us from ending this right now? How will you continue to support teachers so that they can provide high-quality instruction for our most marginalized students? How will your plan continue to build support for educators for anti-racist teaching? Why allow the public to pick away at this decision over the next year? For educators to have uncertainty about the future of sixth grade math for another year and for the opportunity for a racist backlash to arise? Is this a setup for our educators, our administrators and our new black superintendent? At this moment, this town would not debate the worthiness of a Confederate monument. Why are we debating the worthiness of a racist tracking system? Our children deserve better and our community deserves better. If each of you as a board and administration has a belief that math tracking is racist, the question remains, then why? We are asking you, what side of history will you be on? In community, Evanston Aide. Our next comment is from Donna Wang Su. She reads, according to recently, then, I'm sorry, let me start over. According to the recent May twenty-ninth email, accelerated math for the middle schools for sixth, seventh grade math option has been discontinued for the twenty twenty twenty-one year. Given the consideration that this was a recent decision for several factors, there was no prior communication to parents about changing the middle school math curriculum. Fifth grade teachers were not made aware of this change until one week before the email announcement, which has led, which has led to a lack of transparency between the district and families citing an inequity for students. Up until the May twenty-ninth email, the language on the website and from the district indicated that there would be there would still be a math acceleration process when parents asked about it. It would be appreciated if there was more clarification about the process, the reasoning behind the process for this change and how the funds from this change are going to be channeled. There is mention of the new curriculum materials. However, there isn't clarity around why this new curriculum material is being chosen. Was there something wrong with the current format? And instead of making a drastic blanket change that affects all middle schoolers in District sixty-five, why can't things be done in incremental ways? Based on the June first meeting, it was stated that it is still possible for the incoming ninth grader to be able to enroll in Advanced Algebra II at E T H S. How is this possible or slated? What does District sixty-five plan to do to achieve this? In discussion with some of the District two oh two school board members, they were not aware of this change in which the May twenty-ninth email states. We are working on collaboration with middle school math teachers, building administrators and District two oh two to strengthen our math classrooms to fully engage, challenge and accelerate students in our next sequential math class assignment. Some concerns and questions include, does District sixty-five participate in the Illinois Accelerated Placement Act? If yes, is it possible to share that historical data as well as how funds are spent? Is it possible to share the breakdown of students in middle schools, shoot cave and nickels that were in six, seven or math or numbers in general? How many children in advanced math twenty or sorry, advanced math twenty were in six, seven math out of sixth graders? Is it possible to break the percentage of those in six, seven math out for each sixth grade population? What tracks a success for those six, seven math? Speaking with eight alumni that took the six, seventh math in District sixty-five Middle School, they all talk about the benefits and resources that were provided to them. A hundred percent of those eight alumni identify as black with three of them female, share that that was one of the most beneficial experiences in middle school for themselves. Does the magnet schools provide different opportunity for their students or are they also going to be under the same adjustment? Donna will follow up with a FOIA request for all this information as well, just as other curricular changes have faced understanding. There needs to be clarity behind this curriculum change with time dedicated to transition and support. Thank you, Donna Wang Su. And we have one last statement from Meg Pruey, who is the president of the District sixty-five Educators Councils representing over seven hundred and fifty educators. She identifies as cisgender, white female and her pronouns are she, her, hers. Meg states, she would like to address the board this evening about permanently eliminating the tracking of middle school students in math. In, despite the best intentions, a book that has been shared and discussed throughout the district and community, the authors write, tracking is and has always been deeply racialized. The mechanisms that distribute students to different course levels may have shifted over time, but the structure itself has always had stratifying effects. Abundant research, recent research shows that tracking has significant negative consequences for equity, exasperating race and class learning gaps. There are abundant empirical, moral, ethical and ethical grounds for questioning the continued use of this practice. As a union, we want to be clear, tracking perpetuates institutional racism. As resolved by our national union organization, the National Education Association supports the elimination of such ability groupings. NEA believes that the use of discriminatory academic tracking based on economic status, ethnicity, race or gender must be eliminated in all public school settings. Detracking is also supported by the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics. We have linked these and other resources at the bottom of this statement. The statement will be shared and made public on the packet as well. In twenty seventeen, when the detracking for eighth grade math was approved by the board, one of the reasons for the change was because the racial makeup of the students in the accelerated math program did not match the racial makeup of the district. White students were overrepresented and black and Latinx students were underrepresented. In reports following that decision to detract, data showed the positive impact for black students, female students and students in the lower quartiles of standardized testing. So we are asking now, what steps need to be taken to make this a permanent decision for our students in sixth and seventh grade? In addition, we have some other questions for the board. How does tracking in math align with the racial and equity, educational equity statement of our district? Whose priorities are being centered by not making this decision now? How does waiting to make this decision protect comfort and tradition instead of advancing equity for students of color? Which students will be most harmed by this delay? As you think of who is being centered or protected or harmed, we would ask you to isolate race in your responses. In twenty seventeen, the board voted five to one in favor of detracking eighth grade math. We believe that the board was right in this decision. And in twenty twenty, detracking math is still the correct path for our students, especially our black and Latinx students. We support the work that is happening this year and we would like to see the board commit to making this permanent as possible, as soon as possible. As educators, we want all of our students to be successful. We are committed to challenging and supporting all of our students, including providing intervention supports without track. We need district support to create a structure that centers our decisions with a particular lens on our marginalized students. From the N C T M position statement, they advise, providing educators with space to collaborate and ongoing real-time professional development. Educators have expressed their support and urgency for G-tracking in the Math Standing Committee statement. We ask for strong support for educators from the school board, district level and then building level administrators as well as the community. We know that racial equity is a priority in our district. We also believe in making it a priority in all that we do. This is not just about tracking math. It is about committing to actions that will dismantle racist systems in our schools. As I wrote an email to our DUC members last week, we as a union are committed to doing the work. We are committed to standing with black educators, children and families in this fight for justice. We ask that the board stand by their commitment and urgently move towards permanent action. To do this, we are also asking to know when this will be on the board's agenda for discussion and action and that we can hear tonight each board member's position on detracking in math in our District sixty-five middle schools. In kindness, Meg Pruey. That concludes our public comments for tonight.
Thank you very much, Adila, and thank you to everyone who submitted a statement. We will move on to, sorry, the next item of our agenda is the, is our, our action items. And we have a consent agenda, which biz, you have the motion on that?
I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendations outlined in the attached group motion and approve the personnel terminations, May twenty twenty Board of Education meeting and committee minutes, destruction of April twenty eighteen closed session minutes of recording, April twenty twenty list of bills, treasures, report, budget amendment, the F Y twenty-one, C L I C insurance, renewal premium payment, the F Y twenty-one self workers compensation renewal premium payment, the F Y twenty-one prevailing wage resolution, the F Y twenty-one working cash fund transfer, power school student information system agreement and the cybersecurity agreement.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lindsay Ryan?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Tanya Booty?
Yeah.
Hilton?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Cartha?
Yes. Next, we have approval for our new superintendent to begin work early on June eighteenth. Just by way of some explanation, we, people may recall that we recently had voted to extend for Dr. Erhard and Dr. Wenstrom. The original, our original contract with them had them each allotted a hundred days of work. We realized that that was not going to work, given all of the additional work that was created by transitioning to remote learning and created by COVID nineteen. So we added workdays to their contract. However, by law to preserve their pension, they can't each work more than a hundred and twenty days and they are hitting that. They will hit that by June seventeenth. We need to have a superintendent and Dr. Horton has graciously agreed to to move his start date to June eighteenth. So, that is what we are voting on. So Rebecca, if you can please take that motion?
Yes, I moved that the Board of Education revise its May fourth, twenty twenty motion in accordance with with this motion regarding Dr. Devon Horton's starting date as superintendent and authorize Dr. Devon Horton to commence employment with Evanston Skokie School District sixty-five as superintendent on June eighteenth, twenty twenty and that he be paid at his twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty twenty-one per DM. and that he be paid at his 2020, 21, 2021 per D M rate for the period of June 18, 2020 to June 30, 2020.
Second.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lindsay Ryan?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Tanya Booty?
Yes.
Hillburn?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Kartha?
Yes. Our next action item is a SY20 curriculum update on pilots and adoptions. Before we, we vote on that, I think Stacy will be giving us a presentation.
Essentially, I just have kind of a quick introduction to it. The memo really works to accomplish two different things. First, we are providing in the memo an of the annual update of curricular materials. And so that is attached, and you can see the materials that are being used across the core content areas in science, social studies, ELLA, math, across the board. And then additionally, in, within the memo, you'll see that there are some requests to move forward on adopting some curricular materials. Most specifically, we have completed the process of the curriculum review for science in third through eighth grade, and we are seeking approval for adopting Great Minds in third through fifth grade and Open Saiad in middle school. To be clear, this was connected to the, to the science curriculum review. It has gone through the process of working very much collectively and collaboratively with our DEC colleagues. It has been approved by our standing committee within the science discipline and has support of the curriculum advisory committee. So we bring this forward after identifying it through an extensive paper screen, piloting the materials, and then seeking support in those avenues. Additionally, we have second grade phonics that we are bringing forward for adoption. Last year, we brought forward K and 1, and that's part of the Teachers College units of study. For K 2, that really kind of creates the third leg of the stool. We have the reading units of study, the writing units of study, and phonics. Last year, second grade was not completed yet, so we could not adopt it at that time. We have piloted the materials and have support from the disciplinary standing committee and the curriculum advisory committee. Final, we're seeking, finally, we're seeking support for the K 1 writing units of study. Again, that's filling in kind of the third leg of a stool for our complete, for complete literacy instruction, reading, writing, and phonics. And again, these have been piloted and supported through our standing committees and curriculum advisory committee. So tonight, we're bringing that forward, seeking approval for those moves, as well as sharing the curricular materials for next year. I will add the little caveat that that is the curriculum materials as we know them right now. As Dr. Horton did state, we are running the task force globally, and we are planning for teaching and learning around four different scenarios for next year. There may be some adaptations and some supplements that we need to make in order to make sure that we are making, providing educators and students the best possible materials for each of those scenarios that we have. I think what I want to speak to just quickly before opening up for any questions, and I'm really excited about the pilot materials we have coming forward in middle school. StudySync will be piloted in our middle school. Couple things that are really nice about StudySync. One, really highly rated Ed Reports curriculum. It is built on a digital platform, and so it will, in my opinion, be able to stand very well regardless of learning environment next year. And then secondly, in math and middle school, we are, will be, we will be piloting Desbook, which is a math curriculum that's built off of illustrative math, which is an open source curriculum that is one of the highest rated standards line curriculums through Ed Reports. And Desbook is a partnership between illustrative and Desmos, which develops really high-quality math tools that are already in use among some of our educators in District 65. And we're fortunate enough to have two District 65 educators who are Desmos fellows. So we are really excited to have the opportunity to pilot that. We were selected one of 40 districts out of, and I forget the exact number that applied, but it was well over 1,000, in order to be able to pilot this curriculum in seventh and eighth grade. The curriculum pilot similarly is not fully developed in sixth grade yet. So we are piloting next year Open Up, which is built also on illustrative math. So we'll be moving into a very much aligned set of curricular resources, and that will really support increased levels of rigor and kind of stronger mathematical experiences in six, seven, and eight, which is part of our response in order to make sure that we are accelerating learning, both for our students that are not yet at grade level, as well as our students that are above and beyond grade level. But that's kind of the memo in a pretty short summary. I am certainly open and willing to take any questions as needed.
Thank you very much for that overview, Stacy. To board, are there any questions or comments? Joey?
I have two questions. Stacy, I didn't go through and add them all up. What's the total bill on all the pilots and resources that are in here? Do you know?
The, I would need to go take a quick look, Joey. It is though, it's right about a half a million dollars.
Okay.
Mind, the science curriculums for Great Minds, that's a six-year license. We opted to go longer because they're better savings long-term.
Awesome, thank you. And my, my other question is, you know, the, the relationship with having some Desmos fellows, I think they're called, and the excitement around Desmos and Desbook and those resources sounds, seems to have some parallel or familiarity with the excitement that we had and the relationship we had with everyday math when University of Chicago was developing those tools as well. We had a lot of teachers in Evanston. They were really excited about a new resource at the time that was up and coming, and, and we engaged in it. And so when I went to Ed Reports to look at the report for illustrative math, and I compared that with what everyday maths rated, they're on opposite ends of the continuum. Are we to expect a more rigorous review of everyday math in the coming years?
The, so our official math curriculum review would be, is two years out, not next year, but the following year. And we do have, we are aware of that review, and we've been working with EM4 and in certain situations, working to address particular gaps. But yes, that K 5 math curriculum does come up for review in two years. We did move forward. We moved up the middle school math review because of some of the things that we were seeing with sixth grade that we thought were particularly important to address. K 5 is a little more challenging because our educators are teaching all subjects. And so there's not as much flexibility. We want to make sure educators have the time and space to be able to pick up and really get into and learn curriculum well. So yes, that is our radar, and that's an appropriate comment and question. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you for those questions. Rebecca, you have some?
Yes, my questions are around the, the science curriculum for both elementary and middle school. Are you able to share with us if that, if those curriculums have content on climate change and environmental sustainability?
Yep, absolutely, they do. I don't have the list of units in front of me right now, Rebecca. But that is, so we did have a member of the community as part of the process. They've had an opportunity to look at some of those units. They are connected to the Green Team as well. There is some strong content that does connect to global, to global warming, to equity, to equity issues connected to climate change, things along those lines. And we are, one thing to note with Great Minds, we will start and actually Open Saiad as well. We won't start with the full complement of units in the first year. We're going to start with two units next year. I believe in third grade, and one of them is one of the climate change units, but I would need to go back and check. As we build out to the third and the fourth unit, there is, you'll see strong evidence of that content throughout, across the grades.
Thank you. That's great news.
That is great news. Thank you. That, that's really exciting for our students. Anybody else?
Hey, one more, unless somebody else has a question. Stacy, did you say that, I know you said that math was an open source tool. Is math, is the science one also?
So Open Saiad is an open source tool. So the 6-8 that we are adopting is an open source curricular tool. You still do buy some of the materials through, and, but it is a much more affordable solution than, you know, as a result.
So I wanted to first commend you for looking at those resources because they're, they're a little bit harder to look at than the ones that people can just come in and kind of sell you the, the stuff. So A, thank you for, for doing that, but it also poses a challenge. And my question is, how do you foresee bridging kind of that parent support that needs to come with helping people understand that these tools look different than just like the, the textbook that a lot of us grew up carrying at school? Or do you think that some of that's already bridged by the technology?
Yeah, so I think there, there are a couple pieces of it. And I'm going to probably have two answers to you, Joey. One, the way that both illustrative and Open Saiad are operating is it's written open source, but there are companies that are essentially packaging the materials. And that is helping to ensure that some of the kind of, I would say, the kind of accessibility features, things like that, are available to educators and students and families. And it feels more like a curriculum that you would buy from a McGraw-Hill or something along those lines. Illustrative actually has a McGraw-Hill option. It has an Open, Open Up option. So there are, there are different ways in which you can purchase those open source curriculums. Where we are going now, like Open Saiad this past year had part, has partnered up with a provider who's packaging the resource. And that really allowed our educators to be able to access it and feel much more comfortable with the instructional materials. And so I think both of them are far enough along in the open source kind of evolution that these materials will not, will feel very much supportive and high-quality regardless.
Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you. Any other questions?
All right, well, thank you very much. And I think especially, I just want to just highlight, because I know that some of our comments were around the math, the middle school math changes. And I know there's probably some unease with some parents with the decision not to move forward with sixth, seventh, compacted math next year. And I just, so I want to highlight that the new curriculum that's being piloted really is going to address some of the concerns that parents have around needing kids where, where they are. So I am excited that that is moving forward. I'm excited that all of these changes have gotten educator support. And so thank you for all of the intense work that I know was to, to move all these pieces forward, especially during a pandemic. I think, Anya, I think you have the motion on this, if you want to go ahead.
Yes. I move that the Board of Education approve the adoption of the recommended curricular materials as outlined in the board memo.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lindsay Ryan?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Tanya Booty?
Yes.
Hillburn?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Kartha?
Yes.
And then with that, we are going to move on to the, our board reorganization portion of the meeting. And so to, to kick that off, we need the appointment of President and Secretary Pro Tem. So Joey, I believe you have that motion, if you can.
I do. I move that the Board of Education appoint Phil Erhard as President Pro Tem and Adilak Rushi as the Secretary Pro Tem.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lindsay Ryan?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Tanya Booty?
Yes.
Hillburn?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Kartha?
Yes.
And then Phil, it's all you. You're muted, Phil.
Board is, I'm going to make you aware of now. Anya Tanya Booty has submitted a letter of interest in serving as the President of the District 65 School Board. Are there any other nominations, including self-nominations for this position? Not seeing any then. We will now take a vote to elect Tanya Booty as Board President for the duration of one year.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lindsay Ryan?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Hillburn?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tanya Booty?
Yes.
Kartha?
Yes.
Thank you all. I have the next mo, or do I have the next motion? I do have the next motion, but I also wanted to read a statement. If y'all can give me a couple minutes. So thank you to my board colleagues and to the District 65 community that we represent. It's an honor and a privilege to have served in board leadership for the past three years with Sunny, and a true honor to now step into the presidency role. Sunny, thank you so much. You leave really big shoes to fill, and it's been a pleasure to work with you. Yeah, you are an outstanding board president during unprecedented times. I'm grateful, I'm so grateful for your continued presence. I'm sorry, lost my track. And Biz, thank you so much for joining me in board leadership. We are so fortunate to benefit from your gifts and talents as well. I'm grateful to Heidi and Phil to have the opportunity to work closely with you this past year. An interim year like no other, I'm certain. And I thank you all for your phenomenal commitment to District 65. And I'm so excited to welcome Dr. Horton. You have queued up a powerful launching pad for your leadership, and we are so excited to have you officially start on June 18th. Lastly, thank you to everyone's families for sharing you all with the District 65 community and for my family for sharing me. Our families too are engaged in a service to our community. I'm so proud of the groundbreaking child and family-centered racial equity policymaking that this board has done. I value each of our lived experiences, talents, and contributions, and I'm so excited for the meaningful and without a doubt, at times, difficult work that lays ahead. I have been saddened of late, heavy and tired with grief and fear by the state sanctioned violence that we see being enacted across our nation. I'm proud of the global throngs of communities, including our own, organizing themselves to bravely engage in mutual aid and stand up and demand more humane and just treatment through reforms, abolition policies, and demands for investment in community. The past two weeks as a Black woman, a Black mother, I have felt pained. I believe strongly and sit, sit here because I believe our children deserve a more healed, a more sustainable, a more empathetic, a more loving world. They deserve to live in a world free from barbarism, in a world where there is no question if their lives matter. And right now, that is not the case, but it can be. While I have grief for Ahmaud Arbery, George Floyd, and Breonna Taylor, and the thousands that have come before them and since, so much grief and fear and rage, it's paralyzing at times. But I also feel hope. But I also feel hope that change don't come because we are the descendants of the undefeated. Because of that, I know we will persevere with love for one another, with vision for our children's future, with imagination, and with fervor for our community. While I grieve the error of this country and the conscience of everyone who has been and continues to be complicit in its genocide of the indigenous and kidnapped African captives who have built it and whose descendants still reside, I grieve yet still, I rise. Still, we are here. I speak up, I stand up because we deserve also to be served and seen. We are not diversity accessories, and our suffering is not background noise. An excerpt from Maya Angelou's Still I Rise. Leaving behind nights of terror and fear, I rise. Into a daybreak that's wondrously clear, I rise. Bringing the gifts that my ancestors gave, I am the dream and the hope of the slave. I rise, I rise, I rise. Look at the composition of this board and our district administrative team. We rise. I once was a child in a district much like District 65 in demographic, climate, and culture. My aptitude to lead and learn was neglected, and I had no models in my school district to envision myself in the seat that you all have voted me into. It was not until my departure to an explicitly racist school with a gifted program that my learning was invested in. To the negligence, however, of my emotional safety, no family or child should have to make such choices between learning and physical or emotional safety. I'm committed to leading with the value of academic rigor for every child and holistic learning. And I can do that confidently because those are the values of this board. My hope is that we lead in a way that ensures every child has academic and emotional readiness to take our seats down the line. And 30 years from now, when they do, they won't be maintaining justice rather than fighting to build it. So it's with humility and on the shoulders of my ancestors and many bold voices that came before me that I step into this role and on behalf of the entire District, on behalf of the entire District 65 community. What I can continue to promise you, board colleagues and District 65 community, is a continued commitment to transparency and inclusivity and to not let our foot off the gas. As unrest spreads across our nation, it is clear we need our commitment to racial justice now more than ever. And the power in making policy with individuals' full humanity in mind. It's a misnomer that talking about race is divisive. Remaining in this consciousness about race is truly divisive and a violent practice. We are seeing the consequences of that today. So we will continue in this work. Thank you, colleagues, for your trust and your collaboration. Together, we will do big things for the children and families of District 65 in collaboration with the knowledge and wisdom of our stakeholders. With much gratitude, let's go District 65. Let's link arms and move forward in community for a just and equitable future.
We believe in you, Anya.
Thank you. So I am going to read the next motion, and I'm so proud to do so. Biz Lindsey Ryan has submitted a letter of interest in serving as the Vice President of the District 65 School Board. Are there any other nominations, including self-nominations for this position? If none, we will now take a vote to elect Lindsey Ryan as Vice President for the duration of one year.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lindsey Ryan?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Tanya Booty?
Yes.
Hillburn?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Cartha?
Did you, did you hear SUNY? Or did you just?
SUNY, you're muted.
Yes. Little dramatic pause there.
I want to start by expressing my gratitude and appreciation to SUNY for her incredible service to this town. To my fellow board members, I'm grateful for your trust and confidence. I'm humbled by the opportunity to serve as the Vice President of the School Board. I commit to using my voice in this role for us to reimagine this district in whatever ways necessary as we strive for equity and deliver on our shared commitment to dismantle white supremacy, creating anti-racist policies and practices to transform our operations, to improve the outcomes and experiences of Black and Latinx students. I am beyond excited to partner with Anya to do this important work ahead. Thank you.
And Biz?
Kim, or yeah, Sula.
Okay. So I have the next motion. I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendation and elect Adilak Kureshi as Secretary for the Evanston Stokely School District 65 Board of Education until its next reorganization meeting in 2021.
Second.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lindsey Ryan?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Tanya Booty?
Yes.
Hillburn?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Cartha?
Yes.
All right, so next on our agenda, my agenda just disappeared, sorry.
The Code of Conduct?
Okay, yeah, so Sergio, you have that motion?
Absolutely. So this is, so I move that the Board of Education adopt the attached Code of Conduct recommended by the Illinois Association of School Boards.
Second.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lindsey Ryan?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Tanya Booty?
Yes.
Hillburn?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Cartha?
Yes.
So the next item on our agenda is the adoption of our board agreements. And there was, these are the same board agreements that we adopted last year with just one addition. And that addition is the transgender and gender expansive trainings that will be offered to staff and making that available to to the board as well and requiring that board members do both the adversity seat or all of those, the adversity seat and the transgender and gender nonconforming training. Did anyone have any other comments or questions or discussion items in relation to the agreements? All right. Biz, I think you have the motion.
I sure do. I move that the Board of Education adopt the attached board agreements.
Second.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lindsey Ryan?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Hillburn?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Cartha?
Yes.
Tanya Booty?
Yes.
All right, and so the next item on the agenda is the board retreat, which will give us the opportunity to reflect on our practices and vision as a board with the guidance of the IASB Field Office. And will also give us a chance to, if we want to do any revisions to or additions to the board agreements, to dig into that more as well this summer. Becca, you have that motion?
I move that the Board of Education schedule a closed meeting for Wednesday, July 22nd, 2020, beginning at 9:00 a.m. to be held at the Joseph E. Hill Education Center or virtually for the purpose of discussing in closed session board self-evaluation and the appointment, employment, compensation, and performance of specific employees.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lindsey Ryan?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Tanya Booty?
Yes.
Hillburn?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Cartha?
Yes.
Thank you all. So the last item besides, oh, I'm sorry, it's the last action item before a couple of discussion items is the board meetings.
I got that one?
Yeah, Joey, you got that one.
I move that the Board of Education approve the 2020-2021 board meeting dates as presented.
Hernandez? Lindsey Ryan?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Tanya Booty?
Yes.
Hillburn?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Cartha?
Yes.
All right, so we're going to move on to a couple of discussion items. First is our board planning discussion. So at the end of each school year, we take this opportunity as a board to talk about priorities for the coming school year so that the superintendent and cabinet team have the opportunity to plan. And we will review what those plans are as we reconvene the next school year. So I asked everybody to think of three to five priorities. And I invite you all to highlight your three to five or potentially more like myself, priorities that came to mind as you reviewed the draft that was linked to our agenda.
The draft that we sent you, board, is the one that was used this year based on the feedback from the board on trying to streamline those. And we wanted to see if you wanted to continue to move in that same direction. For what we could do, if the board would desire to do so, is they could provide those to the President, to the Vice President, and work with Dr. Horton on then together that agendas for the upcoming year with that too, if you'd like to do with that approach.
I would like to give the opportunity for the public to hear what our priorities are as well. So we certainly don't certainly don't need to belabor the point. But I would like to give those who are in attendance the opportunity to understand what our priorities are as individual board members. Oh, go ahead, Joey.
Say, should we just start throwing some out there?
Yeah, yeah, please do.
I think my first, my biggest priority certainly as Dr. Horton comes on board as a as a governing body is our strategic plan has reached its end of term. And it's time to figure out a process for how we're going to recommit for what the the vision, the near-term vision, the next five years looks like. And that strategic plan is pretty all encompassing, right? It's got a financial picture, it's got a academic excellence picture, it's got a policy focus. That's a that's a big item, but I feel like we want everything to be tied to, we've we've used those seven priorities in place of a strategic plan. And again, I don't know what the the end product looks like, but I'd like for us to have a space to discuss how we're going to work together to take Dr. Horton's vision for the district and our governance and sow the seeds of a successful, long-term future.
Great, thank you.
Oh, I oh, sorry.
No, I say, go ahead.
Okay. Um, you know, I had one of that, that is one of my my suggestions. I think, you know, I don't know if this is really, you know, kind of a priority for next year or just more of a making sure we consider how we monitor. You know, we know that the upcoming year is going to be a non-traditional school year and probably going to have some form of remote learning and all of that. I don't know how we can build in discussions regularly and sort of progress monitoring of how remote learning is going, how we are adjusting is necessary. I mean, I think that's going to be important for us as a board to hear, but also for us to report out to the community, sort of the special circumstances for next year. So that was one thing. It was brought up in several public comments today around math and math acceleration. And I do think that we should have some public discussion around what the the administrative thinking is. But I also want to be clear that it probably is not something that is subject to a board vote. I know we've, in the past, we've kind of muddled it because we did vote on detracking eighth grade math, which I think was kind of a remnant of having the board previously having intervened in not allowing the consolidated algebra for all, and so we're kind of correcting it in that sense. I don't know if we want necessarily going forward, wanting to perpetuate having some of these sorts of administrative program decisions really being board votes. But at the same time, I think there's value in sort of having it as a a discussion item at a board meeting so the community can better understand what the plans are, how the math pilot is going, what plans are for if we are continuing or not continuing the acceleration program and all of that. Again, I don't know if this is more of maybe a monitoring kind of question. You know, we we got the report last month, whenever that was, around special education and some of the proposed changes. And I think we probably need to see the more intensive changes. And so having building in some time for discussion, sort of like the follow-up of now that we have this data, we've made some initial changes, what's next to better support our special ed students? And then finally, something that I bring up almost every year, if not every year, is I think we need to build in conversations around boundary lines. And it's a difficult topic, I know, for any community, and it does impact a lot of other, you know, decisions around program delivery, around TWE, around special education. And so I think we need, but I think we need to be able to figure out how we are going to start really digging into that conversation about whether we redraw boundary lines, whether we are talking. And I realize that we are also in a very precarious financial situation, so it seems odd to be considering, you know, building a school. But, you know, whatever those discussions need to be, I would love to see us more intentionally delve into that and maybe have a timeline for when those decisions can be made.
That makes sense. Thank you. Nothing wrong with consistency, SUNY. Sergio, was that you?
Yes. A little bit, and you know, given that, again, this pandemic, as well as the as well as the, the racial issues that have emerged around racist police and causing the, the social trauma for, for everybody in the country. So really want to have a, a robust discussion during our board planning around mental health supports for fam, for students and families. You know, community members and then the community organizations locally and the city to help with, start some of the, some of the restorative healing and conversations and dialogue that's gonna be needed in order for us to get over this, this social trauma, these social traumas that we're suffering through now. Again, you've got a lot of people in crisis, folks who have lost jobs. I mean, it's, you know, something that we really have to consider and that impacts the way our students will be learning, in whatever way we try to deliver our instruction and the way that we decide to go forward with that. So again, pairing that along with the discussion on how, you know, through the task force, how, how we will deliver instruction. And then making sure that we have supports for parents, right, that are accessible and, and communications with them around how children, their children are doing or progressing. And then getting, getting that, you know, echoing what my board colleagues said earlier, is like kind of making sure that there's progress reports on how maybe having this feedback loop between fa, between families and, and our school district in regards to how they're receiving the work and how we can continue to partner up with them, right? To help us co-develop and, and improve and evaluate remote learning and the mixed delivery system that I'm sure we're gonna, we're gonna be delivering through for the next school year.
Thank you, Sergio. I'm sorry. I can't, I'm not sure Su Laure, Rebecca, who started speaking first?
Okay. So for me, I think the, to add a little bit to what Sergio already started, I think that I'm really concerned about, about recovery. So I think a lot of our conversations have to be centered around a community that's recovering from a pandemic. And so conversations around family and community engagement, I think are gonna be central to a lot of the, the work that we're gonna be doing this coming year. In addition to that, I think a lot of the, I, I would love to see more around parent education with all the, all the different initiatives that we've, that we've introduced. I definitely think that's an area of improvement for our district to ensure that we are giving parents and community members all the necessary tools to understand the changes that are taking place and how to best support, support students. And, you know, with the LGBTQ Week and the Black Lives Matters Week, I think that there's, again, areas of improvement to how we engage our, our parents in those, those two weeks specifically. But again, back to, you know, just recovery. And still, I will keep on with priorities around early childhood and how we're working with partners. In addition to, you know, to, to echo Suni's comment about, you know, potential redistricting and are, specific to our TWE, our TWE conversations that need to be had in regards to ensuring that we're setting up Bessie Rhodes for success in the coming years. And I just want to ensure that that's kept as, as part of our planning. And finally, as, you know, as a partnership that we have with the City of Evanston, I want to ensure that our, our commitment to CARP remains present. I'm really, I was really, really, really happy with Stacy's news earlier, but I think that that's a really essential partnership that we need to keep at the forefront, as well as ensuring that we're, we're a district that is preparing our, our young, our youngest leaders to, to take over the helm where that's gonna be needed. And those, those would be my areas of concern.
Thank you. Su La?
Yeah, thanks, Anya. I guess a colleague once said when we were talking about strategic planning at one of my former institutions, culture eats strategy for breakfast. So along with our strategic planning, I want to talk with Dr. Horton about what are the cultural changes that we need, need to make as a district? And what, what are the, how can we kind of foster a culture of continuous improvement, right? That's gonna require continual reflection, but also some of the things that we were talking about. I think in that miracles framework that you laid out about accountability, specific metrics, and the continuous feedback loop for how you get to some of the cultural shifts that we need to make. So I'm looking forward to supporting you in that. And then I think, as others have said, I think as we look ahead to this year of recovery, as Rebecca aptly put it, I hope we'll think about how we bring students back with trauma-informed practices in mind. I, I mentioned this to Phil and Heidi a little bit. What are ways that students can maybe touch base with the teachers that they left so abruptly and, and friends that they left so abruptly this year? And how can they reconnect with those relationships and get a sense of closure before they move on in their grades? And to take care of their social, emotional well-being as they transition back. And, and we know that the transition back isn't going to just be like a flip, flip of a switch. It's gonna be incremental, it's going to be in fits and starts, and it's going to be still unusual year. So how do we prepare them for that? And then I guess the communication piece as well. It sounds like a lot of the misunderstanding or, you know, bad feelings seem fostered by what people think of as a lack of communication or communication in ways that they are not used to getting or communication in, in places where they don't look, right? So how can we better those channels of communication?
So the benefit of having a stellar board is I could just say ditto. We all have covered a lot of great things. I just want to emphasize, you know, Rebecca, you're talking about how we need to engage families. And I do think that as difficult as this remote experience has been, there have been some incredible opportunities. There's some new ways of operating that are normalized that we really need to capitalize on for reaching families. That Zoom might be an option that we need to really reconsider for future topics. And, you know, making sure we're getting information to folks more. I think we've learned that people do show up. Many of us have been on calls with 50 or 100 people that previously would have had 10 people in the room. So let's not assume that, that everything we're learning right now or everything we're utilizing has to be scrapped. I, I think, you know, I just want to emphasize also that I would like to see us continue to have growth in the racial disparity and discipline. And I would like us to really focus on the report that we got on special education. And I don't think that we will improve either of those situations without seriously considering redistricting and really thinking about resource allocation and making sure all of our students have access to what they need. So I'm, I'm excited to work on all of those things with you all.
Thank you. So y'all hit many of the things that are on my list, but I'm still gonna share my list. So I also would be interested in us having a discussion about bilingual education and our TWE programs specifically. Not just Bessie Rhodes and how we're supporting Bessie Rhodes in the vision that we initially voted on back in 2017, I think. But also the discussion that we've not had extensively about the single strand TWE programs and how ultimately we'll address that quality assurance issue in having those single strands isolated. So that is on my list. I would also like to loop back to early childhood. We had a really great and useful early childhood report in 2018, I think? Or was it 2019? But one of the, there were a couple of outstanding questions that we had, and I would love to get an update on. And there was, I think, a, a three-year plan or a three- or five-year plan that was included in the report that we received. So it'd be great to get an update and how that is going. And perhaps also to address the ongoing questions that we had. I think it would also be useful, useful for us to get an update about how our schools have been doing with the SRO revisions that we made. And along with, I think, redistricting and strategic planning is a discussion about our fiscal state and involving the community in those discussions. And the last thing on my list would be touching base again on the SPED report that Romy presented and the recommendations that she made and how, how we're doing on that. Those are topics that I would like to see come before the board. And amazingly, I think we had a lot of overlap in the things that we are interested in, in hearing about and spending time discussing next year. And I think we should also, we'll have to be very deliberate about the, the things on this list that come before us as discussion and what is an action item. And making sure we're monitoring purview and decision-making around those issues. But thank you all so much for your thoughtful reflections. Yeah, Joey?
I had a couple others. I just didn't want to share my whole list upfront.
Oh, okay, I see how you're doing.
Just to be a little bit more deliberate, too. I, I gave Rafael a heads up about this earlier today because I didn't want to surprise him. I think by December, we have to have a conversation around what the fiscal needs are moving forward. And if changes need to be made, what they are, so that, that we can have community involvement. I think we have to have action on that well before spring. So a plan for a discussion around, you know, if it's, if it's a budget deficit reduction conversation, if it's a reorganization of resources or something, whatever that's gonna be from the administration, that recommendation. We are coming up against the end of our referendum dollar years. And we've talked extensively for years around what that means, what the trajectory is of those funds. We are outspending what we have. And we are, we are living outside of our means and only being able to maintain our resources to kids because of the referendum, which I'm, I'm grateful for. But we need to right the ship at some point. And I think, I think the bell is gonna ring at the end of this calendar year. So we need to have that conversation and have it publicly and give people a chance to engage in that conversation with us. Because I think choices will have to be made. That was, that was one, that was a, a big one. It can fit in with the strategic planning project, process as well. But it's something that's coming up. And the other is I want to second the vote for culture over strategy. I think specifically, Dr. Horton, something that, that I would like to see kind of ongoing over the course of the year, I don't know if it's two or three times throughout the year, is a check-in with our educators around this first year. You only get one first year in the district. And so you get to be the ultimate auditor in chief of how you feel the district is. And whether we're, whether we're doing surveys, you know, whatever you do to, to get from all the educators, how they feel about working in the district, how they feel about supporting our students, I think is critical for you to then bring back ideas and recommendations for how you want to either lift up some voices and promote the positive, but also alter and change the people that are feeling down about where they work and how they work. And I think there needs to be a, an approach to, to read the culture of the place before you can actually impact it. And with that, you know, I, I've worked in a number of school districts. I've observed a lot of school board meetings. And as a school board member, you get a lot of communication that is, you know, tilted a little bit to the, to the negative, a little too often sometimes. Usually because people only speak up when they're upset about something. And we can impact that. We can use, again, not a lot of time, but we can use five minutes at the front of every board meeting to promote students, to promote family engagement, to promote good programs that are happening and to highlight things that are going on, not just in the, you know, we have the high five, which is great. But, you know, there, there are other ways to, to promote things that are going on and to show everybody that there's a lot more good happening than bad. We just aren't communicating it or noticing it or talking about it a lot. And that can also help impact culture and how we all feel about our community.
Great, thank you, Joey. Was there, were there any other priorities that folks didn't have a chance to highlight or share? Okay, then I would like to
Real quick, Anya, I just wanted to add, and this was mentioned a little bit, but in regards to, you know, two years ago, I think we started on the, a measure of our social, emotional learning and well-being and how our students are doing and how our staff are doing. So just wanted to add to that, that we, we still need a way to measure how our students are doing socially, emotionally, as well as our staff. So I think that's a really important piece that, that we still need to work on. And it was mentioned in, in different ways, but I think more so again, in terms of, of recovery, I think that our needs are gonna be very different than they were any other year. Just to bring that back around, that we, we still need that piece.
Absolutely, thank you. Thank you all for your reflection, the time that you took to reflect and provide such thoughtful feedback. I'm looking forward to Dr. Horton, your first year. And I'm looking forward to having the chance to dig into these important topics. The last item on our agenda is our board, or last two items, our board committee appointments and our school liaison assignments. Adila has the electronic copies and will be, you'll be posting them or attaching them to this agenda, right, Adila?
Yeah, it's been updated to the board packet, and then we'll post it to the website tomorrow morning.
Okay, wonderful. So yeah, our committee appointments are not terribly different. I do want to acknowledge the change on the policy committee and celebrate Rebecca stepping into the role as chairperson. And also express our gratitude to Sergio for all of your leadership on that policy committee over the past three years. You've brought some really important conversations to the fore and have been an excellent leader of the committee. And I'm really excited, Rebecca, to have you lead us in this regard going forward this year. And I don't, and the other notable changes, Sunny, will be on the Park Advisory Board and City Liaison Committee. And Biz will be joining the City School Liaison Committee as well. Did anybody have any questions or comments about the committee appointments?
Just a quick question, because I'm a newbie. So do I just wait to hear from when these? I mean, I know I get the finance committee meeting invites, but the other ones, do I just wait to be invited or do I have to raise my hand and say, I'm here? How's that work?
Some of them, you just wait to get invited, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there will, the, the, they're on the board ca, the meeting calendar, like the, the meetings are on there. And then we usually get email announcements reminding us of those meetings and the agenda, the agendas being ready for review.
But for, for the District 202 and 651, the dates are on our board meeting dates. That's when the meeting is. The committee will meet probably one month before that to plan the agenda. And that'll be like a surprise, you know, 7:30 AM meeting that, that you'll get a week's notice about.
Okay, thanks for the heads up. Okay, thanks for the heads up.
So the committee meeting should be listed on the meeting calendar as well under committees.
But you are correct, the joint district 65202, those have not been planned out yet. So those meetings are not on the calendar. And the same goes for the city school liaison committees. We have not coordinated with our outside partners yet for, on dates for those.
Okay, so what's the, I, I usually, that's how I usually find out is by consulting it. So what, what's the timeline typically for getting those coordinated and that calendar updated?
So usually, normally, we would have had those dates by now. I think it's just a matter of, hopefully, within the next month, we will figure things out and coordinate across the board with that. And I'll make sure that it's updated and we'll make sure that it's announced at the first board meeting for 2021.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right, and so the last thing on our agenda are our school liaison appointments. Our school liaison appointment, appointments remain, are going to remain the same for the 2021 school year. Just made a correction to make sure that Sula was listed here for Lincolnwood and Walker. And the attachment to the meeting agenda listed some details about the benefits and the roles and responsibilities of the liaison appointments. And I encourage our community to also check that out so that folks are aware of who their liaison is and how to benefit from that relationship at their children's schools. We are here in service to community and we definitely want to be connected with our schools. So did anybody have anything to add to the liaison appointments? Any questions or concerns associated with that? All right, well, with no business before the board, I adjourn this meeting. Oh, FYI is at the bottom, y'all, sorry. I adjourned this meeting at 9:35. Have a great summer.
Thanks, everybody.
Everybody.